This is the regular meeting for October 17, 2017. Please rise for a moment to sign off here in connection and a pledge allegiance to our plan. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Local vote. President Destefano.
Present.
Alvin Donahue. Green.
Excused.
Carriga.
Here.
Haddad.
Present.
Keith.
Excused.
Mia.
Present.
Moore.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Rector.
Here.
Scolera.
Here.
And present. Motion suspended with the reading of the minutes of the September 19 meeting and place them on file. Motion, Priscilla. Lauren. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion suspended with the reading of the city treasurer's report as of September 30, 2017, and place it on file. Rick. Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Committee reports, may I have a motion and a second to place committee reports on file? Motion by... So, Abduz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Communications, first communication, community... Excuse me. Columbia County Planning Board stating that there will be no significant countywide or inter-community impacts associated with the proposed law, introductory number four of 2017. The proposed local law would amend the city zoning law as it pertains to the definition of a dwelling unit, the off-street parking requirements for certain types of dwelling units, and the allowance for certain additional condition uses. Additionally, in relation to this local law, on Monday, November 13, at 6:30 p.m., there will be a public hearing here for the public to respond to this local law. Second communication is from the VFW Columbia County Post 1314 inviting council members to participate in the Veterans Day 2017 ceremonies. May I have a motion and a second to receive these communications and place them on file? Lauren. Abduz. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolutions. Appointing commissioners of need, roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Next resolution requiring a rendition on the sale of city foreclosed real property. May I have an introduction of... I need an introduction on this one here. Oh, that's right. I need a new introduction and a second on this resolution. Mike. Abduz. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Ms. Chairman, will that help me get my church back?
Will it help you get your church back?
Yeah.
No?
Oh, not that one. It's coming up.
It's coming up. I'm glad.
Yeah, that one's just...
Sorry to come so quick.
That's number four.
Okay. Next resolution is accepting donations to the youth department in the amount of $1,955 from multiple GoFundMe donations. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore. O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector. Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Next resolution, authorizing cancellation of interest and penalties on real property taxes for Holy Temple First Church of God in Christ. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Next is establishing mandatory...
We're in the slum temple.
No, that's not it. No, no.
That's not my church.
No, sorry. That's number seven.
I'm sorry. I'm joking.
It's not number seven.
I'm not even going to sit down.
Next is establishing...
There's nothing on here regarding... I read it wrong. Yes.
Okay. Next is establishing mandatory training for planning board and zoning board appeals members of the city of Hudson. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Next is authorizing a chargeback by Columbia County for Greenport EMS services. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore. I'm sorry.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. And new resolutions for tonight. The first one is authorizing the cancellation of interest and penalties on the real property taxes of Shiloh Baptist Church. May I have an introduction and a second? Rick. Abduz.
I have a question. Is Reverend Cross, our Reverend Cross, our do not the temple, Holy Temple First Church?
No, we're in the slum temple. Okay, we were... We got our certificate of incorporation 10 years ago. We are one of... We have our 501(c)(3). We moved into the old Shiloh Baptist about eight years ago. And about, I'd say, three months ago, your city took our church from us. And something definitely is wrong with that picture.
There's a confusion here.
Yes, awful lot of confusion.
You were down to Shiloh Baptist on Lower Horn Street?
No, no. They moved down there and we moved into theirs, 241 Columbia Street. We've been there for eight years. And as I said, we have our own 503. We're certified by the state.
These are two separate issues. What this is, what Shiloh Baptist Church was for taxes that were assessed to them and shouldn't have been assessed to them because of a paperwork, I think, that should have been filed every year by Shiloh Baptist Church. This is... That's the one issue. What Reverend Cross was talking about is an issue where the property was on the tax rolls, the properties, the taxes were not being paid.
And we were ready to pay the taxes. We came, talked to the treasurer, we asked what way we could go forth to do that. You are the... You're supposed to be our councilors and you're supposed to lead us. And you led me right into a brick wall. And that was very unfair. You know, this is a city of 7,000 people and we're acting like we live in New York City. Something is wrong with that picture. Something is very much wrong with this picture. It shouldn't be saying, "We can't." You should be telling me how I can.
Get a man his church. I don't sense. It's a church. Get a man his church, all of y'all. Get a man his church.
That's the idea.
It's a church.
Fine, you give him a man his church.
It ain't the jug joint, it's the church of God. Y'all act like it's a jug joint. Where everybody go drink their liquor and stuff. It's a church to pray and make things better for your life. It's not a jug joint. Get a man his church. He's begging y'all to give him his church.
Want to give him his church, ma'am. Question, Bob. What do we have to do to give him his church? Another resolution or...
This issue has been over and over and over again.
No, it hasn't. I came to you... I came to you... Excuse me. I came to you one time, your finance commission, and you said, "We can't do anything about this."
Because it was past the time that the church or the property owner had to redeem and pay the taxes.
Okay, I want you to finish. All that time, I had been talking with the treasurer, asking her how we could proceed, okay? And we didn't get an answer. We should have been helped. We should have been helped and we weren't. It wasn't like I was sleeping. I went out and asked. I looked for directions. And I couldn't find any.
Heather, would you like...
And you are our representatives.
Heather, would you like to add to...
I would, with all due respect to the Reverend. We met multiple times. I met with you, I met with your son, I met with other representatives, at least three times. We talked very specifically about the fact that the property owner, which was the Craft Cardinal Lodge, was delinquent in their taxes and we were going to have to foreclose on it.
And what...
We brought... I brought Giff Whitbeck over to my office specifically to meet with them to describe what the situation was. You and I have had multiple conversations.
That's right.
You said that you were very clear on the fact that Craft Cardinal owed this taxes. You're very clear on the fact that you did not own the property and therefore couldn't pay the back taxes.
No, that's not true.
We talked with Giff Whitbeck.
That's not true.
We talked about the fact...
But that's not true.
It is absolutely...
That is not true.
It is absolutely...
We asked you how we could proceed.
Yes, and what we said, including Giff Whitbeck, the attorney, and myself, we said, "Craft Cardinal Lodge has to pay the taxes on their property if they want to..."
And we said that we were willing to pay the taxes.
And we said that we're not legally allowed to...
That wasn't what was said, ma'am.
That was indeed. And then we talked about the fact that if the property had been transferred to the church, that we could talk about...
We were ready. Excuse me.
You're interrupting me with all due respect.
But I'm here for some help, help from you, which you're not giving me, okay?
All I can...
And I'm ventilating right now. I'm getting to the point where I'm getting ready to ventilate my hostilities and I have to pray on that, okay? But the whole thing is, I walked and talked with you. I asked you, "How could we proceed?" I asked you, "How could we pick up their bill?" We were willing to pick up their bill.
And I explained to you what would have to happen. Giff Whitbeck explained to you what would have to happen. You went after they lost the property and after the redemption period goes over, then you went to the county and had them transfer the property.
No, that's not what happened, ma'am. We were in the process of that for about three or four months. I let you know that we were in the process. It seems kind of funny that those foreclosure signs came up a week before we were able to bring that up to the... Excuse me, up to the county.
We talked about it months before this happened.
It seems kind of funny.
And there were years of notifications. And when you brought the majority of your congregation...
Well, we were willing to take over those years. We were willing to take over those years. The only thing we asked you was, "How could we do it?" Please help me to stop yelling. "How could we do it?" That's what we asked.
And I explained how, and Giff Whitbeck explained how.
And Giff Whitbeck was the one that wrote up our contract.
Which he did after the redemption period had expired, which makes it null and void. I honestly don't know why Giff did that. He should have known better to give you hope in that because that was not ended up... Does not end up being a valid legal document.
Well, I don't know what you're going to do because... Or what we're going to do because we're all standing on the wrong side of the fence right now. We're all standing on the wrong side of the fence right now. We're people, the type of people that know each other. We look into each other's backyards, call each other in for barbecues, and here you're treating me like a stranger. Something is wrong with that picture.
Is there anything that could be done going forward? Any other resolution or process?
The council doesn't have the authority to just give property away to people. They don't.
We don't want to give... We don't want you to give it away to us.
I understand.
We... No, you're not. See, you don't because that's what you said, so you must not understand.
We have also had multiple conversations, have we not, about the fact that the city doesn't have the authority to do that, but you could purchase it at auction? Because that's how the city has to legally dispose of it.
After the picture, we were willing to pick up. We were willing to pick up their burden. And we let you know that. And they let... They said it was all right.
You let us know that and we talked about it months ahead of time and then nothing happened.
Boy, I tell you, I don't know. I really don't know. I've worked with some of you and I've worked with you indirectly, but I didn't think that you would treat your citizens like this. You should not be shutting the door. You should be trying to show us how to open it. You know? You should be trying to show us how to open the door. And that's very unfair. And you represent me? Something's wrong with that picture. And you want... And November, you're coming to get somebody's vote? Something's wrong with that picture. Something's very much wrong with that picture. I think I've said enough, okay? I'm gonna sit down.
I've been there for seven years with the kids and everybody, no one here.
Roll call vote on the authorization to cancel interest and penalties on the real property taxes of Shiloh Baptist Church. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Authorizing the transfer of funds within the fire department accounts to cover the shortage for maintenance of the 2001 KME tower ladder truck. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Priscilla. Tiffany. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Authorizing the transfer of funds for costs associated with the foreclosure process. May I have an introduction and a second, please? Mike. Priscilla. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. May I have a motion and a second to pay bills? Henry. Lauren. Roll call vote. President Destefano.
Aye.
Alvin Donahue.
Aye.
Carriga.
Aye.
Haddad.
Aye.
Mia.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Rector.
Aye.
Scolera.
Aye.
Carrie. Local law introductory number six of 2017, local law to preserve community character, local business ownership, and local wealth. May I have a motion and a second to lay the proposed law on the alderman's desk? Henry. Rick. Now, may I have a motion and a second to refer the proposed law to the Columbia County Planning Board and the City of Hudson Planning Board for their recommendation to pursue its provisions of New York State general municipal law, section 239-1 and section 239m, and the city... Hudson City Code, section 325-40. Motion. May I have a motion, please?
Where are we? That's not a... Well, not as a separate item, but it's the second part of that.
It's the second part is to make the... Give... Set the... So, may I have a motion and a second to refer Henry? Mike? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any questions about that, this law?
Not for... One more on Rick's. Local law introductory number seven of 2017, amending section 188-5 of the Hudson City Code pertaining to disorderly house. May I have a motion and a second?
Madam President. This law was requested by... This revision to the law was requested by the chief of police during the police committee meeting. And I don't think he's had a chance to review it, nor has the police committee had a chance to review it. Tiffany Carriga and I spoke today about, you know, doing this correctly because there's a lot of concern and there's been some conversation. So, I'm going to suggest and put a motion forward to the council. If we put this in the police committee's hands, let that be reviewed on committee level with the chief of police there. Any interest in that?
Can I second that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Any new business from the council? New business from the public?
One. I'm very sorry for the way I responded. I'm not sorry for what I said, but church is very close to me and I think that you should be looking at, "How can we?" as opposed to "Stop." God bless you.
Steve.
Hi, Steve, and with respect to the other piece of zoning legislation, with respect to reimbursement of consultant fees, I didn't see a... Here, I have a communication back to the county. Is that still on my desk or what status of that? That's query number one. Quickly query number two. Is there a minimum bid that must be made at foreclosure taxes?
Yes, there is.
People who do have taxes in the rear?
It's taxes and fees and...
All right.
And to answer your first question, that the county planning meets tonight.
On that one. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anything else? Heather?
I just want to make a comment because it's pertaining to the conversation about the church. As you know, the council approved all of the foreclosure properties to go to auction. That does include those two parcels and that auction is scheduled for November 4th, which is a Saturday at noon here at City Hall.
And all the properties are currently on the city website with the...
There's a link to a document that has all of the properties listed along with their minimum opening bids, as well as the other terms and conditions. There'll be a hard copy available in my office as well for people who don't have online access.
Thank you. Any other business? Yes?
I have a question. When were the revisions made to the disorderly houses law? Who made those revisions and... Yeah.
Heather?
The short history I'm aware of of the disorderly house law, obviously it's been a law on the book, not this particular law, but I guess it's... Probably shouldn't use the same title to bear any reference to the past law that was taken off, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, January, I believe it was December. It was about a year ago. It was about a year ago and I believe Tiffany Carriga was the one who... I think that was your resolution, so maybe you know more about the provenance of it, but...
It wasn't, Tiffany.
I'm sorry. I thought it was. Only as you've talked about it the most recently. Now, if it's a negative, that's what I remember from the police committee meetings. I'll take that, but it was... Yeah. The new law that's been revised during the last police committee, I believe it was in the September police committee meeting, there was a lengthy conversation about the recent crime. And the police chief said that he had asked the legal committee in January of this year to redo that law in a way that would give him more ability to do his job. And he had asked the legal committee, Michael O'Hara was chairman, and they did something, I think, and didn't go too very far from what I understand. And at that point, Claudia and myself, we had a conversation with our attorney and he said he would draft up something. So, we got the draft of that last week. It's the first we've seen it. It came to the desk of the common council. We had a brief discussion about it. I think that not knowing everything about it, but really probably, as I said, probably should require more conversation, more review, more analysts by both the police chief who requested it and the police committee. And then they could bring it back to this board, this body, if they feel it's worthwhile. Is that answered?
And that meeting is next Monday.
Yes.
I'm just curious, at what point, or is that law... Do people get to see it? Is it... Are like the specifics of it? I mean, is it...
It's online, I believe.
It's online.
The mayor posted it?
Yes.
Yeah, your name, ma'am?
Me?
Your name?
Rebecca Wolf.
Thank you.
These things would be in the minutes of a particular council meeting in which they were discussed, so if you look at meeting minutes for last month, you'll see copies of whatever came on the agenda.
And even what's on our desks tonight is also online, so you could actually see what we've been... Yes, ma'am, going on. Anything else?
What I was... My point that I was trying to make was that since the law was taken off the laws, we've had a direct correlation or a percentage of increase between incidents that are sidewalk-related, I guess, complaints. And the point of this, I think, was to limit a neighbor, or rather, increase a neighbor's ability or a homeowner's ability to, I guess, congregation in front of their house or sidewalk, rather, maybe front porch or stoop. And it's not a very good way to explain it, but I think those were... Those were the chief's concerns.
So, your name?
Eli Berkowitz. I know we're going to have a longer conversation about this in the coming week and I appreciate that, but just want to note that given the complexities of the predictors and causes for crime, I think that we should hesitate to draw a direct correlation between the removal of this one antiquated law and the more recent one and the rise in crime. There are multiple factors. I look forward to discussing that further with the police committee and its body.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Carol.
I just have one question. You mentioned a public hearing on local law number four, which is changing the zoning, eliminating parking requirements. And when is that going to happen?
Monday, November 13, at 6:30 p.m.
November 13?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Sarah Sterling. Also, on the foreclosures, if the minimum bid is not met, then the city can, I think, after that, negotiate with somebody for, say, a lower price. And I'm just not sure that everybody's aware of that.
Anybody else? Motion to adjourn.
Actually, you know what? No. Yeah, I just want to remind everyone that in December of 2012, City Hall was broken into, and there's a video online, and two people were arrested, but only one was charged and the other one, I believe, maybe got away. So, if anybody knows anything, please contact the police department.
Oh, I got something to say.
Okay. Your name?
My name is Annette Perry. I would like to ask everybody in this room, what do low income mean to y'all? Because we never see nobody. We were seeing the mayor. I've been on the corner for... I've been on the corner for seven years making sure them kids, no matter what color they is, get on that bus safe, no fighting, and don't acting like a fool. And them kids listen to me. They get on the bus, they do what they supposed to do for them bus aides and the bus drivers. So what do low income really mean to everybody that's in this room? We only see y'all guys when it's time to vote. If you give me a hundred dollars for the kids, y'all go talk about it among everybody else. But every dime that anybody done gave me, I put hot chocolate and I love them kids. And I got eighty kids. Every single morning I get up for them kids. But nobody, but it's four people in here that I know love me to death and they stand by me for toys for tots and they give me their money and they stick by me and they don't talk about it. Cring cross stick by me, Miss Musman stick by me no matter what my big mouth say. So I want y'all to go home and sleep on this. And when y'all see Annette Perry on that corner, at least say, "Thank God for Annette Perry for them eighty kids, low income, that I have to live in there because I can't get no big job like half of y'all can." But y'all just come down there when it's time to vote for y'all and get mad because I got the biggest mouth in Columbia County. I've been here all my life. And my father, Andy Perry, he mean his son in Hudson, New York. And I was at that boys' club and I did a lot of stuff for these kids. And I'm not talking about what I did because I'm doing it from the bottom of my heart. Just like I'm sitting here and trying to figure out why don't y'all could get money for everything else. Get that man his church for free. It's a church. It's not the juke joint. So when y'all go home, ask y'allself that Annette Perry with her crazy behind, what are y'all doing for the low income? I'm talking about downstream. I ain't talking about where everybody got all these fancy ditty and y'all could go in every restaurant. I ain't been in a restaurant now because I can't afford it, but I still ain't going to shut myself down. I love these kids and I ask y'all to come out your pockets and give a little something to the low income. Don't come down there when it's time to, for y'all to vote and y'all want to come knocking on the door, "Oh, she bugging out, she this, she that." I love them kids from the bottom of my heart. I was born and raised in Columbia County and I will never, I wouldn't care what color. It could be turquoise if I care. I love these kids. So when everybody go home tonight and you're going to go get you something, wine, sit about, "Oh, she had, she just wanted to talk about something." I'm talking about something that's coming from my heart. Ask all of y'all that's sitting up there, but y'all want us to vote for y'all, what are y'all really doing for low income? I ain't talking about nobody that got some big money in their pocket. I ain't talking about low income, the hood. I can't afford a two thousand dollar house. I can't afford it.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn? Rick? Henry? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.